City Council. The time is nine oh one AM and I now declare the meeting open. Manizza City Council would like to acknowledge the Kalkadoons and the Intellengi people, the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet, and pay respects to elders past, present and emerging. And I'd also like to extend that respect to any of Australia's First Nation people that are in attendance today. Please note, this ordinary meeting of Manizza City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with Council's recording of council meetings policy. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed that your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. So we're going to start off now with a prayer. Thank you, Pastor.
Please help Mayor Daniel Slay and the councillors navigate this people issue with grace, understanding of the people. Please be these people performing from falling into the temptation of working to their own personal gain. Help them serve the people who are there in your glory. Lord, we lift up the matter of youth crime unto you. We pray for the police that they might discharge their duty with compassion. And we pray for these youths that they might, you might grant them mentors and elders who would read the rest of this text. You might provide for them men and women to love and care for them and to provide safety. I commit to you the various workers today, medical staff, teachers, emergency workers, workers at the mine, retail and others. Office workers, those who are working for you and grant us fruit for our labours. I commit to you school students, ask that they might learn well, relate to others well and be a blessing for the teachers. We ask for grace, for carers and state stay workers, grant them grace as they care for children and the elderly. Especially ask for your grace to be known by people in the area who are sick or suffering. We ask that they might know your comfort and have the strength to persevere in their situation. I do pray for the families of the miners killed at the Dougal River mine collapse last week. May they mourn well for their lost family and grant them peace and support from the community. The Father is this council meeting continues. Granted, their decisions may be based on vice council. So the peace and welfare, truth and justice may come out of my service. Thank you so blessed with the nation around. Councillor Dritte.
Amen. Thank you very much for that. Okay, that takes us now to apologies and leave of absence. And I, would a councillor like to move a motion to accept councillor McCray to come in via a team's meeting?
Move, Barwick.
Seconding councillor Stretton, and the motion is that councillors accept councillor McCray coming into, livestreaming into the council meeting. All those in favour, must've got that bit, and that's carried. All right, well now, public participation, and we have Peter Bolger. We'll just get you a microphone. And, hand over to you.
Thank you very much for allowing me to address the meeting. Just have a problem with an easement in Manizza, but this particular one in Kakota Road, between Fitzchafin Street and Kakota Road. The grass is two metres high, it's stopping the water from flowing through the channel. It took me three council meetings to get anything done last time because it's administered by Cairns, Science and Environment. And I'm not going to give up because it's become personal with me because I've been, a neighbour rang up and said, oh, rang up the local lawyers and wanted to spray the easement to stop any mosquitoes breeding because the grass is so long, the water's at the bottom. And he said, oh, no, it's not that problem, it's that property over on the other side, which is my property. So I'm going to take it very personally, I'm going to see this to the end. But I feel Manizza should be getting all this money from the state government and not go into the Science and Environment Department in Cairns, which don't care about Manizza because you only have to drive around and see the easements that are totally neglected, overgrown, with grass that high, nothing's getting done. The main one is corner of Spence Street, Rebecca Street and Leonard Street. A security fence has been there for eighteen months and I found out Cairns is paying for that security fence. Why can't they just fix the problem? So I'd like Manizza City Council to look into it. They say, oh, we'll write letters to the homeowner, to the owner. Well, the state government. And it just goes on and on and the grass is getting longer and it's restricting the flow of the water in the easements. And I'd like Manizza City Council to fight to it. I'm bringing in the state government, Robbie Catter, to see what he can do. Because that money should be coming to Manizza City Council. You're looking at, you know, one and a half million dollars a year. And then I'm told, oh, we haven't got enough staff anyway. Well, you get local contractors to do it. Least the money's staying in Manizza. And at present, nothing's getting done. So I would like Manizza City Council to please look into it. Especially this easement Rebecca Street and Kakota Road, but there are many others. Which I only discovered an easement in, on the Barkley Highway, there's a Barkley Hotel and there's a street, side street there. And then there's administration, what used to be McIntyre and Associates, it's empty at present. And there's an easement back there, at the back of that property. I've never noticed in forty-three years, I've never seen it before, but, and no one looks after that. So things breed in it because it's stagnant water and the water can't get away. So I'd like Manizza City Council to take on the project because I feel there's a lot of money that should be coming to Manizza and not going to Cairns. So, thank you very much for allowing me to address the council.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Through Madam Mayor, we'll certainly provide a written response to that issue. It is, I would just say it is a universal issue across Queensland. It has been described many ways, but one of them is, one of the apt descriptions is cost shifting. I'm sure the councillors have heard that term, so we will certainly reply to the particular question that posed the bigger issue of getting, convincing the state government to maintain its easements right across Queensland is a bigger issue. And there is some activity ongoing to try and persuade the state government to provide sufficient funds so that we can do the work and maintain their easements in the city. It's not a question of doing the work, that can be done, it's simply the funding of what are essentially state-owned assets. So it is ongoing sadly.
Thank you, Dale, and I totally agree that I've seen that fencing up now for at least twelve months. So that does seem way too long. Thanks, Peter, thanks for highlighting that. Okay, well, we'll now move on to item five, which is the confirmation of previous meeting minutes. Five point ones are the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the fourteenth of December twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the twenty-fifth of January two thousand and twenty-three be confirmed as a true and correct record.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Folke, all those in favour? And that's carried. Then that takes us to item six, which is actions from previous council meeting. Outstanding actions from previous council meeting, which is on the twenty-fourth of January twenty twenty-three. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move again, Madam Mayor. The council receives and notes the outstanding actions from previous council meetings as at the seventeenth of February two thousand and twenty-three.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor Tully. And, oh, any comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us then to declarations of conflicts of interest. Is there any councillors present that have a conflict with the agenda?
None.
No.
Neil.
And if you see any conflicts arise, by all means raise it once you see that arise. The mayoral minute, I thought I'd just take the chance to update on what's happening at the moment. As you know, in January, the Prime Minister of Australia flew into Alice Springs and brought in liquor restrictions. After that announcement, I made contact with the state government to raise my concerns on what I thought would be an influx of people coming into Manizza to access alcohol. Since the thirtieth of January, we've seen, and I've been told from agencies, we've seen numbers increase to what is now around five hundred and seventy people who have come into Manizza and mainly to access alcohol. I have been liaising with the minister Crawford and he has sent this week a number of DDGs and DGs, so director generals, plus representatives from the state and federal government and liquor licensing. So there have been a lot of meetings happening this week, not just at council but throughout the city. I also spoke to the premier yesterday about the situation. And it's heartening that the state government are acting swiftly and are looking at what they can do to work with us. I've also been liaising with Jenny Hill, mayor of Townsville, and Bob Manning, mayor of Cairns, as well on the ongoing issues that we face normally. And especially with youth crime. And a lot of our youth crime is different to youth crime in metropolitan areas. And there's different reasons why we have children on the streets. And I think that's something that as mayors and councils, we need to flag. The other thing I wanted to sort of acknowledge at the moment is the earthquake that happened in Turkey and Syria, which has taken over forty-five thousand lives. I also want to acknowledge the two miners lost at Dougal River. There's no doubt that the mining community is a close, close, close-knit community. And when lives are lost, it not just rocks that community in, it rocks the whole industry. I also want to mention that we lost Jim Adlington, a Manizza icon, this week. And Jim has lived here most of his life. He was renowned for his business with sewing machines, material. He was the president of the Chamber of Commerce. And everyone knew him as a gentleman. His dying wish was that council would promote prostate checks so that more men may not fall victim to prostate cancer. So that's something we'll be looking at in November, which is Prostate Cancer Month, and seeing how we can get more involved as a council. So with all that in mind, I was wondering if we could please stop for a minute's silence. Thank you, everyone. So now we'll move on to item ten, which is the executive services reports. And ten point one is a subdivisional concept plans over lot twelve on SP two five nine zero double three. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please? On page twenty-three? Twenty-four, sorry?
I don't think it's in there. I can't see ten point one, did you, did you say?
Yeah, I can, I can see it. You can't see it? Okay, so. Hang on.
I didn't see it on the agenda. Yeah, first one, I got to eleven point one, finances.
Okay, so the first one is eleven point one. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? And I'll just get mine up and going again.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, yeah, I'll move that council receives and accepts the January two thousand and twenty-three finance overview report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Stretton.
And any comments on this one?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. The result you'll see presented, the revenue is well down at this time of year. And we expect that through to June now, so March, April, May, that that revenue will increase as rates are issued and other monies become available, such as the water dividend, and that should balance out as we go forward. The good news is the expenses are holding well for January and pretty much on budget. So I think we're looking for a reasonable sort of a run-up to the end of the financial year. So having said that, the ratios are not showing the best at the moment, one of them's quite good, the other two are still, are still down. So, but again, they should improve as the financial year kicks on. I think the rest of the tables are fairly well-known to councillors with the overdue rates and also the outstanding loans, which is reducing as time goes by. Yeah, I think, I don't have any more comments on that, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and I guess one of the comments I got from the cup of the councillor is when are the water bills going to be issued?
Yeah, the first half yearly residential from the period from the first of seventh to the thirty-first of twelfth, and also the non-residential properties, they will be issued early February two thousand and twenty-three. So I'll probably ask the director where that's at.
Okay, so the answer to that was we're actually issuing, issuing those water bills at the moment. Any other queries or comments? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to item twelve and twelve point one. So, sorry, item twelve was infrastructure services reports. And twelve point one was works and operations overview report. And I'll hand you over to councillor Tully.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. The recommendation is that council receives and accepts the January twenty twenty-three works and operations report.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, thank you. I was just looking at your faces like, you can find this one?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, what page is that on? I'm struggling here with the agenda.
Eleven point.
I had eleven point two, Splashes was the next item.
Oh, okay.
No, we haven't. Eleven point two, he's got Splashes on eleven point two.
Yep, I see it now, sorry. Okay. Do we want to finish that one and then go back?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's finish that one and then we'll go back. Sorry about that, so. I saw your face councillor Coglan, I thought that's, something's wrong there. Okay, councillor Tully, any comments on that one?
I'll move back to eleven point one now. Yeah, just an overview during December, January, works and operations, prepared Manizza for the up and coming events, which will be occurring today and tomorrow. Hopefully everyone will attend the function we have tomorrow, tomorrow evening at Christian Oval and the rain will stay away. We put out five tender packages for the DRA F A, valued at approximately fifteen million. Continued supplying materials for the family fun park as we've got that to a stage where we can, you know, it can be used tomorrow evening. There's, there's been a few issues, but we've, you know, thanks to the council, we've got, we've got over those and, you know, hopefully people will be happy with the outcome there tomorrow evening. Yeah, that's about, that's the main thing.
Thank you councillor Tully, any other comments?
Yes, through the chair, I'd just like to commend our council on the ongoing program that we've got for our vehicles. There's a number of new vehicles, but there's also the tyre fitting equipment and the wheel balance and the wheel alignment machine and a new sweeper. The preventative maintenance program on our plant and equipment, we'll see our, looking after our equipment, plant and equipment for the next few years and get it into a reasonable state where we can budget for and look after our equipment for the good of the community. It's great to see that all of our asset management plans are coming together with that and the plans are around the care and maintenance of our vehicles.
Thank you councillor Fortune.
And I think the only thing I'd like to say is like, you know, thank you council. I know there's been a few people step in to help make sure this fun park is going to be open tomorrow. So I know it's, I know the council have been working hard and a lot of people have come to help. And I know that the councillors would have been there if you needed us. But yeah, it's, all I can say is it's going to look amazing, so yeah, really looking forward to that.
Okay, so if there's no other comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. Now we'll jump back to eleven point two, which is the Splashes overview report, and I'll hand you over to councillor Coglan.
I'd just like to put the recommendation forward that council receives and accepts the January two thousand and twenty-three Splashes overview report as presented.
Thank you councillor, can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully, councillor Coglan, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Oh, the only thing I would like to just remind people that as of tomorrow at four o'clock, it's free to get into Splashes from four till seven. So there's free entry for anyone that would like to go there and then they can go over to the park and enjoy the rides and everything. The gate between the pool and Christian Oval will be open, so it's only a quick little trip down the driveway and they can enjoy themselves. And just probably also a congratulations to all the swimmers that were here last weekend in the, I think it was the Northwest Swimming Trials. I hope it was a good event, I know they did the whole Saturday in the rain. But anyway, a little bit different for Manizza, at least it wasn't in the heat. And yeah, congratulations to all the people that were selected. And I heard it was a very well-attended event, so that was good for Manizza.
Thank you councillor. And I hear the town pool is also free on Friday.
Four till seven, yep.
Yep, so. All day.
All day Friday, sorry.
Yeah, so all day Friday, fun park will be open. And we, are the roads open for those?
The rides are on their way.
Are they coming through the centre? Okay, so, and I think it's worth mentioning that the rides will not only be available on Thursday evening, they're going to be available all day Friday. So I know the kids have all got the day off, so it's going to be great.
Only nine till one on Friday they're, they're available. And just to let the children of Manizza know, the difference on the Friday is there's going to be a few water play ones, there's four big water slides coming. So that'll be, the rides will still be there from Thursday night, but they'll also have extra four water slides, which is really good to see.
That'll be great, so nine till one, that's a good time. And then they can go for a swim in the town pool for free. All right, if there's nothing else, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us now to the Economic and Community Development Overview Report for January two thousand and twenty-three. And I'll hand you over to councillor Peter McCray. Oh, sorry, councillor Stretton.
Recommendation there is council receives and accepts the January two thousand and twenty-three Economic and Community Development Overview Report as presented.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, and councillor Stretton, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, no, Madam Mayor, everything there is in, under the events that's happening. Anybody wants a bit of light reading, they can read the report.
Thank you, any other comments on this one?
Yeah, through the chair.
Oh. Thank you, deputy.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I agree with councillor McCray about the sports expo. I'd also just like to commend the staff on the Australia Day presentations and the, you know, the awards and also the citizenship ceremony. I thought that was a very, very good day there, good ceremonies and, yeah, well-attended, so, thank you.
Thank you, and I think I might just highlight that tomorrow is Manizza Day and we're kicking off with a morning tea at the Civic Centre at nine AM. It'll be free. So if you're not working tomorrow, or you can get away from work, come down and have a cup of tea. We're going to be talking about Manizza. There's going to be photos, videos, speeches, and it's just going to be a really lovely start to the hundred years. In the evening, we of course have Christian Oval at six o'clock and that will have rides and things for the kids, live music, food, drinks, fireworks. Tenya, Kurnigan and Maka are going to be hosting. The family fun park will be officially opened and that's happening sometime after four. And we are going to be having ABC broadcast live from Splashes. And that's Adam from Drive Time, if you know that. So he's going to be interviewing key people in Manizza. But if you are down there and you want to go in and have a chat or have a listen, come down to the town pool, it'll be free. And on Friday, not only will the pool be open for free and we'll have rides for the kids, but there'll be, Hard Times Mine is doing underground tours. And these will be specially, you know, one hundred year tours, which are a little bit shorter and themed about talking about a hundred years. So if you are interested, give at Backatizer a call on that one. But otherwise, get on our Facebook page and website and there's plenty of advertising there to, if you, if you want to see what's happening for the hundred years. So we might move now to all those in favour? And that's carried. That now takes us to eleven point four, which is the Corporate Services Overview Report for December and January two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council receives and accepts the December two thousand and twenty-two and January two thousand and twenty-three Corporate Services Overview Report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion? Councillor Fortune? Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor, it's just outlines the work being done through the administration, taking of cases through, through the council and being dealt with by the various departments. I know it's been quite busy.
I note that's been quite busy during January, um, as compared to the previous month and, um, also I note that, uh, the water and sewage, um, requests are, are quite high, um, and also the local laws is up as well, so. Um, but the closeout rate's quite good, so, um, I, I'm quite happy with the report and recommend it to council, thanks.
Thank you deputy mayor, any other comments on this one? Okay, all those in favour. And that's carried. And that takes us to eleven point five, which is a hundred year advisory committee meeting minutes, and I'll hand you over to councillor Peter McCrae.
I read that.
Oh, yeah, councillor Streton.
Just in case we have. Yeah, yeah, councillor McCrae.
No, oh. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor Coglan. Uh, any comments on this one councillor Streton or councillor McCrae?
None from me, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor McCrae. If there's no other comments, all those in favour. And that's carried. Which now takes us to item eleven point six, which is the Library Overview Report for January twenty twenty three. And councillor Streton, are you gonna move this motion?
Yes, thanks madam mayor, recommendation there is council receives and accepts the January twenty twenty three Library Overview Report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded Bowick.
And any comments on this one?
Councillor McCrae.
Uh, here, here, and I, I think one of the things I didn't mention, which is what the library's been working on, is Isa images. And they are gonna be launching that tomorrow at the morning tea. And it's, it's gonna be, um, a way that the community can have access to our rich history in photos and videos and documents. So this is gonna be an ongoing, um, journey for the library with collecting all that history and making sure it's scanned and preserved and, but the most important thing is having the community be able to get access to this. So that will be launched tomorrow, which is very exciting. All right, so if there's no more comments, all those in favour. And that's carried. That ta- now takes us to, um, eleven point seven, which is the Environmental Charge Policy Version Three. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Yes, madam mayor, um, recommendation there is council accepts the environmental charge policy version three as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune.
Yes, madam mayor, I'd just like to, um, give people a bit of an overview on, this is the policy, uh, that we, um, you see it on your rates, environmental charge, and the purpose of this policy is to provide guidance and details on how Mount Isa City Council will manage and allocate the revenue collected through the separate environmental charge to achieve council's environmental management initiatives, including rehabilitation across the region. The policy has been reviewed and updated to include the biodiversity strategic, strategy projects and infrastructure projects that benefit environmental outcomes derived from the biodiversity strategy twenty twenty three and twenty two thirty three, environmental management plan twenty twenty, twenty twenty five.
Thank you. Has anyone else got any comments or questions on this one?
Yeah, just a question on that, is this, the environmental working group, I mean, is that being named or is that, because I, I, I've never heard of that. So who's the councillor on it?
I am councillor Tully.
Okay.
Uh, through the chair, um, I, I've just, um, just inquiry or, uh, question about, um, uh, whether the proposed MRF can be an endorsed project, um, within this fund. Um, I'm not sure how much, uh, what the level of funding is in this fund, but I, I see a real connection there between, um, the environment and recycling and, and there is a lot of interest in the community around the council taking up recycling, but as we all know, it's, it's turning into quite an expensive, um, operation going forward. So we need to probably look at ways that we can support it if it, if it does go ahead. Um, so, yeah, I don't know if anyone could answer that through the chair.
Um, through you, madam mayor, I think the answer is yes. Uh, there may have to be, uh, if we get to that point, uh, some finessing of the words of the policy, but certainly the policy is the, um, the, um, clear expression of intent by the council. And I think from memory, there was a reference, an explicit reference to recycling. Um, I, I suspect it'd have to be some, um, finessing of words to accommodate the MRF. And clearly the policy contemplates expenditure across a range of environmental outcomes, so you're not, you're obviously not saying that it would be for that exclusively, but
No.
But in part, I believe, yes. And to put it beyond any argument, there might have to be some adjustments to the policy, which is not a difficult thing to do.
Okay, thanks, yeah, no, I just, I just meant for it to be endorsed so that if, if we needed access to some funds for some part of it or some, you know, uh, thing that flows out of the MRF that, probably a bit of a pun there, but, um, uh, something that, um, we might be able to do to support the operation, it could, um, could be, make use of this fund for it, yeah.
I think, uh, councillor, um, Bowick, if you actually, the, the, there's a policy has been reviewed and updated to include bio- biodiversity strategy projects and infrastructure projects, and that hasn't been in the policy before.
Okay.
So I think we we can, we can might as well start using some of that money.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks deputy. All right. All those in favour. And that's carried. That takes us, uh, eleven point eight, which is the Environmental Grant Programme Policy and Guidelines Version Two. Would someone like?
Through, through the chair, there's eleven point seven.
Oh, I missed one, sorry.
The one we just done. Sorry, it was.
Okay.
My apologies.
That's all right, it's been one of those days. Um. Sorry, I'll hand over to councillor Streton.
Um, yeah, thanks madam mayor, the recommendation there is council adopts the updated Community Environmental Grant Programme Policy and Environmental Grant Programme Guidelines Version Two as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Yes. Second.
Thank you councillor Tully, um, councillor Streton, would you like to comment on this?
Yeah, is, um, the, um, director might be able to help me out on this a bit, but, um, we used to have a couple of five thousand one rounds and we've gone to one of ten thousand rounds and make it a bit more, um, sustainable, long-term projects, is.
That's correct, shall I?
Any questions or follow-up on this one?
Yeah, I'd just like to pose, um, a question, madam mayor, that, um, whether that's actually a sufficient amount of money. Um, I, I, I understand it's fifty thousand across the year and then that would be five, ten thousand dollar grants, um. And, and again, I, I'm not aware of the level of funding that's in the, um, in the environmental, uh, programme, but perhaps, um, there might be an opportunity to lift that across the year, given the, you know, the, um, the interest in environment and that, um, that's around at the moment, especially in Mount Isa. Um, uh, whether, whether it needs to be done here or whether we could look at it, um, so we're voting on it now for the year. So, um, uh, you know, I, I could, um, I would like to see, you know, it probably increased a little bit, um.
Through you, madam mayor, if I may, that what you would do then is just have a second part to the resolution, that is that the, uh, the, um, proposal for an increased level of funding for this programme be referred to the draft budget, uh, process for consideration, so it's not binding, but clear, uh, resolution so that we, we don't miss it and, uh, we bring you some options as part of the draft budget process.
Yeah, my view, that, that sounds really good, thank you, Mr CEO, I, um, my view is that, uh, for someone to do a reasonable environmental project at, at ten thousand is probably not enough, you know, um. What is enough, I don't know, but I'll just, if there's any opportunity for council to be able to lift that amount, I think we should look at it.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I would probably disagree, I, 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 I think the smaller amounts, so I saw it probably more targeted to the schools to get them to learn about the environment and all that sort of thing, or I, I, I don't think council's in a position to fund projects, you know, that have got a, you know, uh, uh, gonna need a lot of maintenance and, and upkeep and all that. I think it's more targeted at, at, at schoolchildren, I think, that's my opinion.
And through the chair, I know it was, um, a couple of sporting groups took it on last year when it was out, but is it, it's gone from five thousand to ten thousand?
No, it's only, if what they've done has changed.
We mer- we merged, we got two parts.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's only one lot, one.
Same amount of money, yeah, but it's, uh, one, one for you instead of two, yeah.
Yeah, but you go for a ten thousand dollar grant, not a five thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it has increased.
Yeah, but less, less activity.
Yeah.
That would mean less activity though.
It's, it's the same, I mean, I just consider twice as one.
Yeah, through the chair, I'm, I'm, uh, concerned with the, um, amount of uptake, um, to the, to the grant programme. Um, I think there should be more, um, uh, promotion of it, um, you know, through, through the, um, uh, schools, through the community. Um, there are a lot of, uh, for example, noxious plants around Mount Isa, um, uh, that are not, not native to this area that, um, you know, uh, if you're, uh, familiar with those types of plants, you can see them every day. And, uh, there's not anything locally being done about that and, uh, I know that there are local environmental organisations that do, um, go after those types of plants, but, uh, they're not, uh, actually, um, applying for any of this funding, so um, I'd probably like to see, uh, council reach out to those organisations and, uh, see if there's a, um, uh, a chance that they could look after or take care of, uh, the noxious plant, um, issue that we have in Mount Isa, in our local government area. Um, but, uh, you know, in, in the future, I guess, um, supporting what councillor Bowick's saying about the, um, increasing of that, uh, of the grant programme and, and the policy and the funding around that, uh, I think there is enough, um, money in the environmental, um, uh, kitty to do that, um, for the short term, anyway. Um. Uh, hopefully, the, uh, uh, with what's coming online with the MRF, where there might be, um, um, you know, added strain to that budget, but, um, currently, uh, there is, I believe, a, um, room to move there, uh, for the um, increase in that, uh, uh, for, under the grant, uh, environmental grant, uh, programme. So, um, in the short term, I think we should consider it. But for today's purposes, um, I'm happy with the, uh, document as it is for today.
Thank you councillor Fortune, any other comments on this one?
Yeah, I'd just, um, like to, yeah, I, I mean, I, I concur with what councillor Fortune's saying, but just to answer a couple of the questions there, um, there wouldn't be any increases in levies or anything like that, it would be no extra cost to the, uh, rate payer. I'm just talking about money that's already in the fund and that's being drawn every year, so and s- this would be a way of releasing a bit more to the community, um, to, to develop some, some substantial projects, um, in my view, so. Um, I, I, uh, just to follow the process, um, if I could amend that motion, could I do that at this point in time, Mr CEO, or will I have to?
Um, with the, if mayor's allowing it, it's fine. Let's move the second part to it.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, and.
Is there an appetite for this m- this amendment?
I, I mean, so shouldn't it be brought up at the budget meeting or not?
Yeah, that's, that's the motion councillor, just for us to consider it at the.
I'll, I'll get no dramas with that.
Yeah, I, 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 I think I'd like to look at the budget implications as well.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, with that said, um, would you like to move your, um, amendment?
I think we've got to move it, haven't we?
Yeah, I've moved it.
So will you move with the amendment, uh, is that how it works?
You, you can do it that way, with it, with agreement, it's fine.
Uh, okay, so I'll move that council adopt the updated Community Environmental Grant Programme Policy and Environmental Grant Programme Guidelines Version Two as presented and that council, uh, consider an increase to the level of, uh, grants to the community for sustainable long-term projects in line with the Environmental Management Plan two thousand twenty, twenty five, uh, to be considered at the budget meetings, um, during the next two or three months.
Well done, can I get a second for that motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you councillor Tully, all right, all those in favour. And that's carried. This now takes us to eleven point nine, which is P C, uh, Y C Mount Isa Variation Request. Um, would it, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yes, I can move the recom- oh. Okay. Sorry Pete, does Pete wanna move it?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, councillor, um, McCrae? Can I have a second for that motion?
I'll second it, Coglan.
Thank you, um, councillor McCrae, any comments on this one? Thank you councillor McCrae, any other comments? All right, all those in favour. And that's carried. That now takes us through to eleven point ten, which is the Lake Mundara Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes. And I believe councillor McCrae, you'll, you may wanna put this one forward. Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded Bowick.
Thank you councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion? Thank you councillor McCrae. A- any questions or queries on this one? All right, all those in favour. And that's carried. Now, that now takes us to twelve point two, which is Major Project Overview Report for January twenty twenty three. And I'll hand you over to councillor Tully.
Thank you, madam mayor, um, the recommendation is that council receives and accepts the January twenty twenty three Major Projects Overview Report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Streton, councillor Tully, any comments or on this one?
Um, thank you, madam mayor, just, uh, the, uh, capital projects that we have underway, which is, uh, everyone knows about the Family Fun Park, the basketball court at Lions Park, um, Centennial Place, the, um, the tender's been awarded and, uh, we're having meetings with the contractor. And that's, that's about the main projects that we're, uh, undergoing at the moment, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this?
Yeah, through the chair, I think it should be noted, um, there's a, um, a long lead time in a lot of the equipment that, um, uh, is coming into Mount Isa. Uh, and, you know, the community have an expectation that these, uh, once the, uh, tenders have been, um, uh, awarded and, and things like that, that, uh, places like this will go up really very quickly. I'm just going to ask for community, um, uh, support, I suppose, and, and patience around the, um, installation of this equipment, uh, that does take a lot of time, um, narrowing down contract, contractors and also the equipment. Um, uh, be a very, uh, nice place to visit once it's completed. But, uh, just want to caution, uh, around the amount of time that these contracts are taking.
Thank you. Ca- thank you, councillor Fortune. All right, all those in favor. And that's carried. That takes us now to twelve point three, which is Water and Sewage Overview Report, December and January for twenty twenty-three. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll move that. Thanks. Um, council receive and accepts the December twenty twenty-two and January twenty twenty-three Water and Sewage Overview Report.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Any comments on this one, councillor Streton?
No, Madam Mayor, just, um, a few kinds of smart meters, uh, um, slowly going in. Um, um, and I ju- I'd just like to, um, hope we get a bit more of the rain that's flowing everywhere else around the state so we can fill our lake. Um, we're getting nice, um, grass-growing rain, but it's not, um, helping the dam levels. So we need a bit of a significant downpour in our catchment.
Certainly do. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor. And that's carried. That takes us to twelve point four, which is the proposed purchase of nineteen A and B Corbalt, Corbalt Street, The Gap. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Through the chair, I'd like to move the recommendation that council approve the purchase of the property at nineteen A and B Corbalt Street, lot two, MPH seven four zero two four five, in the sum of, uh, three thousand two hundred, uh, three thousand, uh, three hundred thousand, uh, three hu- three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, sorry, uh, GST not applicable, plus legal fees of three thousand dollars.
Thank you, ca- um, councillor Fortune. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you. Um, councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Uh, I've, I've been, uh, speaking on behalf of, of the housing for, um, our employees for a, a number of years now, Madam Mayor. Um, I think it's important that, um, we have, uh, genuine, um, nice places for our, uh, staff to, um, live in. I think it's, um, important for the future of Mount Isa, uh, City Council and Mount Isa that, uh, uh, we can attract staff, uh, that, uh, have, uh, issues getting, um, accommodation in Mount Isa quickly. Um, the staff, um, are, are the drivers of a lot of the programs through, um, council. And, uh, uh, we need to take care of our, uh, their people as best we can. Uh, also, the, um, addition, I suppose, of, um, these assets onto, um, the council asset register, um, will, uh, uh, enable us to, uh, house, uh, in emergency situations as, as was, as we have done before. Um, for example, um, when there was a, a, a family traveling through, uh, during COVID, had nowhere to stay, um, council had a, um, a spare, uh, property for them to, um, be housed in for, uh, a couple of weeks. Uh, it's important to have that sort of, uh, um, fallback, uh, option for council. But, um, initially for our employees, attracting, um, uh, high-level, uh, people with, uh, great skills to Mount Isa, uh, is a, um, is a must for Mount Isa City Council. And, um, hopefully through the budget process, we can, uh, look at im- improving, uh, the council housing stock so that, um, uh, we can attract and retain, uh, employees from Mount Isa City Council.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one?
Yeah, just through the chair, Madam Mayor, I just read that I, I, I wasn't too aware that city, uh, country real estate are the agent, um, while they are, whilst they're only the brokers, um, um, I've, I, I guess I have a perceived conflict of interest, so I won't be voting, but I'll, I'm happy to leave.
To you, Madam Mayor, if there's a perceived conflict, so it's not a prescribed one where you automatically have to leave the room, then it's a matter for you as the councillors to, to consider that and make a decision as to whether you stay in the room or not. If, if you leave of your own volition, that's fine, it becomes academic. But, um, it's not just voting, it's whether you're in the room for debate and voting.
Okay.
I'm happy for councillor Tully to stay in the room.
So there's a, there's a particular set of words for those resolutions?
Um, would you like to stay in the room, councillor Tully?
Well, it doesn't really bother me. I mean, I, I'm, I'm happy to go, so.
It, it's up to you, because if you want to stay in the room, we'll just move a motion for you to. Thank you. And I think it, we can all say that, you know, at times you don't realize you've got a conflict of interest until, you know.
That happens.
Yeah.
That hap- yeah, that's, that's fine.
All right, um, is there any more comments on this before we vote?
Yeah, through the chair, Madam Mayor, um, look, I, I support the proposal. Um, I'd just note that it, uh, we moved last year to, to buy a similar set of units, although I believe these ones are higher quality, um, in Traynor Street, which, which, uh, we didn't go ahead with. It failed for some reason. I'm not, not sure of the circumstances of that. Um, so, um, I, yeah, I think, um, we, we already were, this isn't a departure from our, our thinking, so I'm quite happy to support it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, any other comments before we vote? All right, all those in favor. And that's carried. That now takes us to item twelve point five, which is the twenty-two DRFA Restoration Works Packages, one to five. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, re- recommendation is that council awards package one. Ooh, look, hang on, I'll press something I shouldn't know. Sorry, the council does award package one, Duchess Road, Lake Julius Road, Mundara Road and Duchess Road, Pavement Improvements to Halloran and Sun's Earth Moving Proprietary Limited, under contract two zero twenty-two dash one two five for the value of one point eight one six four zero six and fifty-three cents, excluding GST. And the council awards package two, Gunpowder Road, Mount Oxide Road, Decummins Contracting, under contract two zero double two dash one two six, for the value of two point one six eight five nine eight and ninety cents, excluding GST. And the council awards package three, Riversley Road, Lily Water Hole, Riversley Road, Moorstone Road, Highland Plains Road and Herbert Vale Road, Highlands La- Plain, to Halloran and Sun's Earth Moving Proprietary Limited, under contract two zero double two one dash one two seven, for the value of one point nine two nine six two three and eight cents. We probably just need to put excluded GST there. And the council does award package four, Old May Ro- Old May Downs, Thorntonia-Yelvertough Road, Four Down Road and Yelvertough Barclay Downs Road to Civ- Gulf Civil Proprietary Limited, under contract two zero double two dash one two eight, for the value of one point nine four eight eight double six and fifty-one cents, excluding GST. And the council awards package five, Austral Street, Bobon Street, Cranland Street, Francis Street, Kennedy Street, Narney Street, Wonga Street, Camwelly, Yerdangie Road and Lake Nash Road to Remport Proprietary Limited, under contract twenty twenty-two dash one two nine, for the value of eight two two nine double six, excluding GST.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Can I get a second for that motion?
I'll second, thanks.
Uh, councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
No, I'm, I'm, the, the pro- process went through, um, through council and, you know, we've had a good look whilst there was a, um, a thought that ma- maybe one, a tender gets all, um, this was explained by Stephen and, and I, I think we've, um, undergone the, the, you know, the correct, the correct procedure and, you know, with the five packages, you know, awarded, I think we'll get the best result.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor. And that's carried. Okay, and that takes us now to item thirteen. I've got that one. General business. So thirteen point one is the second quarter capital works budget review. Would someone like, like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor. I'll move that council accepts the second quarter capital works adjustments.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Um, Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of that motion?
Uh, no, thanks, Ma- Madam, oh, well, sorry, Madam Mayor. Um, the, um, the adjustments to this capital budget follow on from the adjustments to the budget, um, during, earlier in the year so that, uh, we, we can, um, look at which projects we're likely to finish and, um, uh, expend the funds for. That's clearly outlined there in the table. Um, and there are, there is a full breakdown for each capital works project attached as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on, on this one? All right, all those in favor. And that's carried. Okay, so, uh, the next part is, is going to be in confidential. So with that, I will now, um, call for a recess for ten minutes. And I would like to thank anyone who has been tuning in and may not tune in again. So thank you, thanks very much. Our time's ten oh three AM. Our time's ten oh three AM. Um I'd like to de- it's uh ten twenty AM and I'd like to declare the meeting resumed. Um I'd now like to uh move a motion that as of um local government regulation two five four J um council, council resolves to um consider the following items in confidential which is fourteen point one, request for sponsorship, uh commerce northwest and fourteen point two, request to write off invoices two nine one three two one six two nine one three two one seven and two nine one three two one eight and that comes under uh section C of the local government budget and section G, what are we doing G?
So section two five four G.
Two five four J.
Part C.
It's part C and
Right, would someone like to move the motion that council now resumes into open business?
I'll move.
Thank you, Councilor Fortune. Can I get a second there for that motion?
Seconded, Barwick.
Thank you. All those in favour? And that's carried. Now that brings us into open business and we're at fourteen, which is a consideration of confidential business items, and fourteen point one, which is the request for sponsorship for Commerce North West. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation please?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor. That, um, let's find it. The council awards Commerce North West sponsorship in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars plus GST in support of the two thousand and twenty-three North West MPX to be held ninth to the eleventh of May two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second there for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you, Councilor Fortune. All those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us now to item fourteen point two, which is the request to write off invoices two nine one three two one six, two nine one three two one seven, and two nine one three two one eight. And we'll just note that councillor Tully has, is leaving the meeting for a perceived conflict. Is that right?
That's right. Thanks, Madam Mayor. Can I just say one thing, by May?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you have to bear with me. I'm just bringing myself up to speed with, with obviously some of these things. I'm not absolutely confident about the prescribed conflict of interest exclusion. The reason I say that, the wording of what I've got in front of me, which is what you've had in front of you for, I assume, a couple of years, or this council term, refers to the appointment as a council representative. So it may be narrowly confined to the appointment decision rather than this sort of decision. In any event, and that may be the case, it could be read two ways. In any event, you're on safe ground because it's nothing more than a declarable conflict of interest and there is a process to go through and it's not, it's not a difficult one for you to resolve that someone who has a perceived conflict can stay in the room. So I just need to say that to you. I'm obviously going to check this out after the meeting for future reference. But at the moment, you know, I think you're on safe ground in terms of your consideration of this decision. You've declared the circumstances to each other and I don't think there's any real world issue, but I just need to say that.
Okay.
And there's, there's so many nuances that obviously I'm still being relatively new. I need to understand these issues at a local level and what your policy approach is and practices are. So you have to bear with me, I'm sorry.
So councillors, would you like us to stay in the room for this decision?
Yeah, I'm comfortable staying in the room for this decision, yes.
So should we move a motion to do that?
Well, it's probably not a bad thing to, to, I don't know, I haven't seen this process invoked in my time here and it's not a bad one to do if you, if you want to do that, to be on absolutely safe ground.
Okay, well councillor...
I can walk you through those words if you like.
Yep.
So it's each councillor just declaring as you have the fact that you, you might have a declarable conflict of interest because you are a director of...
MICO.
MICO? On the face of it, this is a nonsense, but just, I think it's a good thing to do. So you've said that. And then you say words and these would be in the minutes. Although I have a declarable conflict of interest, I do not believe I have, a reasonable person could have a perception of bias because you're a council appointee on the board. Therefore, I will choose to remain in the meeting. However, I will respect the decision of the meeting on whether I can remain and participate in the decision. So this is just the standard words. So if one of you wants to say that, we can do that. And then you simply have a resolution and that councillor doesn't vote on the decision to stay in the room.
So that's there.
Yeah. So if you want to go through that process, happy to assist. I think on the face of it, it's a bit of a nonsense, you've, you've, clearly you've...
So I thought of it one by one, is what you're saying.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Okay, we'll start with councillor Streton.
So managing conflict of interest, the script on the right hand side. I councillor Streton inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest as a result of being a director.
I councillor Streton have a declarable contravent interest as being a director on the MICO board.
Board, yeah. And then the next words are, as a result of my conflict of interest, it might be quicker if I just recite them if you're comfortable.
Yeah.
As a result of my conflict, conflict of interest, I will, although I have a declarable conflict of interest, I don't believe a reasonable person could have a perception of bias because I'm a council representative on a controlled entity. I'll use those words. Therefore, I choose to remain in the meeting. However, I will respect the decision of the meeting on whether I can remain and participate in the decision. So they're councillor Streton's words.
Yeah.
If you're comfortable for the minutes. And then the resolution from someone else, obviously councillor Streton doesn't vote on this. I move that it is in the public interest that councillor Streton participates and votes on this matter. And I'm of the view, a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest.
Okay.
Quite procedural, over the top, but there, there it is. So someone has to move that, that second set of words. Councillor Streton doesn't vote on it, he decided, move on.
I'm probably...
Only, only while you're here. While you're effect, only while you're effectively participating in the meeting.
All right, we, we just need you to stay for two minutes, all right? Everyone, everyone, what about if everyone does it and then we vote at the end? We put the motion...
You've got to do them one at a time, I'm sorry.
You're going to move it.
Yeah.
Kim, it just at the end, it says a sample here, just at the end here.
Yeah.
You want to move that motion?
Just a condensed version of that, do it quickly, move on, done.
So I believe that councillor Streton may potentially have a conflict of interest which I am required by legislation to...
No, no, the, one at the bottom. I move that, just at the corner.
Bottom right hand corner.
I councillor Cochrane, I move that.
I move that it is in the public interest that councillor Streton...
Participates and votes on the, on this item, item fourteen point two.
Participates and votes on item fourteen point two on the condition that...
No condition, sorry. On the, because I believe a reasonable person would trust that the final decision can be made in the public interest. That'll be fine. Just, just rattle it off, get it done, move on.
All right. Can I get a second there for that motion? Councillor McCrae, yep, second there. All those in favour? All right.
Done, thank you.
I councillor George Fortune inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest as a result of the recommendation for, in front of us today. Although I have a declarable interest, a conflict of interest, I do not believe a reasonable person would have the perception of bias because of item fourteen point one.
Okay, and councillor Cochrane?
Therefore, I therefore choose to remain in the meeting. However, I will respect the decision of the meeting on whether I can remain and participate in the decision.
Councillor Cochrane, would you like to move the motion?
I, I move that it is in the public interest that councillor Fortune participates and votes on item fourteen point two.
And consider that a reasonable person...
I consider that a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest.
It's an abbreviated version, but it's all we need.
Can I get a second for that motion? Councillor McCrae? Thank you. All right, all those in favour? That's carried. And deputy mayor?
I councillor Barwick inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item fourteen point two before us. And although I have a declarable conflict of interest, I do not believe a reasonable person could have a perception of bias and I choose to remain in the meeting. However, I will respect the decision of the meeting on whether I can remain and participate in the decision.
All right, councillor Cochrane?
I move that in the public interest that councillor Barwick participate and vote on item fourteen point two because a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public's interest.
Thank you, can I get a second there for that motion? Thank you, councillor McCrae. All those in favour? And that's carried. So would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Madam Mayor, I'll move then that council approves a write-off of outstanding charges for invoices two nine one three two one six, two nine one three two one seven, and two nine one three two one eight for the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-six cents issued to the Mount Isa, sorry, MICO for insurances covering the period thirty to six twenty-one, twenty twenty-one to the thirty to six twenty twenty-two under section seven point three, if council sundry debt recovery policy due to a change in business structure having a significant impact on the subsidy funds available to pay the outstanding amounts.
Can I get a second there for that motion please?
Seconded.
Thank you, councillor Cochrane. All those in favour? And that's carried. Someone wants to bring in councillor Tully?
And Madam Mayor, thank you and apologies. What I will do is give you written advice between now and the next meeting on that particular question. And I know it's no comfort, but I've sat in meetings where it, it's taken hours to actually work through just those procedural things. So that's where the law is at the moment, unfortunately.
That's good, better to get it right. Okay, so with that, the time is now ten forty-two AM and I...